I'd like time to me. All right, what is it, the 13th? I'd call to order the May 13th, 2024, meeting of the Harris Township Board of Supervisors. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're actually starting with the public hearing. Due to popular demand, we are introducing for public hearing proposed ordinance number 364, amending several sections of Chapter Eight Motor Vehicles and Traffic, including reducing the speed limit on Bolzberg Pike to 25 miles per hour.
In late 2023, several residents contacted the township regarding concerns about speeding vehicles on the Bolzberg Pike, noting that they felt the posted speed limit of 35 miles per hour was too fast for this residential area. Several of these residents spoke about this issue at the April 8th, 2024 Board of Supervisors meeting. In response to these concerns, staff asked the State College Borough Police to place speed sentries along Bull Avenue to collect speed data. Utilizing the speed data, traffic engineer Rob Watts conducted a speed study and recommends a posted speed reduction to 25 miles per hour on Bolzberg Pike based on PA Statute Title 75, setting speeds for residential districts. Proposed ordinance 364 would reduce the speed limit on Bolzberg Pike from 35 miles per hour to 25 miles per hour. In addition to the speed reduction, the proposed ordinance will also codify two other changes. Tennis Alley is currently signed as a one-way street northbound from Main Street to Pine Street, but is not listed in the current ordinance. The proposed ordinance will also codify the no parking zone on Old Bolzberg Road that was established with the Bull City Brewery Land Development Plan.
Any comments from the public, public hearing? Seeing none, we'll move on then to...
I make a motion to close the public meetings.
Comments about that, all in favor of closing the public hearing? Aye, aye. Okay. Thank you, Frank. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes from the April 8th meeting. I entertain a motion to do so.
I'm going to approve the minutes from the 2024 meeting.
I'll second it.
Any, any comments, clarifications, questions? Okay. So, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Right, now it's time for citizen comments. Members of the public are allowed a few moments to comment on items that are not on the agenda this evening. If you have comments on items that are on the agenda, please save those for that time. Okay, please introduce yourself.
I'm Barbara Headley, Linden Hall Road. And I think I kind of recognize everybody, but I think that Tracy's new, so thank you for coming and serving. I didn't want to come tonight, but I couldn't get in your firewall for the website, so Mark's going to work on that. It has me locked out. I could get into every other governmental website, but I couldn't get into Harris Township's. It says my IP address is blocked, so not sure why, but maybe along the same lines that we weren't getting our emails last fall and weren't getting agenda items. So, not good. Need to bring that out and get it fixed. I sent all of you an email earlier. Takes me a lot of time. I have some disabilities. If I don't make any sense, ask me for clarification. I'm here because the email that I did receive prompted me to remember that there are still open items with Kaywood North Estates subdivision. I'm an adjacent property owner of that property, and last fall, at the meeting that I was not alerted of, the township supervisors approved the plan for that. There was a huge discussion with Mr. Hamster about the responsibility of the developers, the equitable owners, and the owners of the property as to the stormwater facilities management system. It comes down between 1050 Linden Hall Road and 1150 Linden Hall Road. It is a very large system, as Mark would know because he was the planner on the project, and so does Todd. My understanding is that stormwater system handles now, if not all, most of the stormwater for Kaywood, Kaywood North, Kaywood North Estates. In the rain this week, there was water in the pool, the basin. There's supposed to be an agreement, which you would not know about, Tracy, because I don't think you were there that night, but I sent you the video. There was supposed to be an agreement between the developer and the landowners and the township that they are to maintain that entire stormwater system. That stormwater system is now for sale on Lot 1, R, 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 three Rs of that subdivision. I would like to know, as a landowner, what is the status of the agreements inasmuch as PNDOT requires this? And that's what the agreement that night came to with the board and with the developer when they gave approval, that because of the fiasco that occurred on Atherton Street with all the utilities not being maintained for 50-some years and all of the rights away and easements that weren't there, it costs a lot of money and a lot of time. And this is a big project out there. It also goes into flood plain, which Mr. Hamster pointed out. So can you give me an update on the status of this? And if not, please update me through email with whatever agreements are pending and how we're going to handle this inasmuch as right now you have given approval to a landowner who's trying to sell a piece of property that the promise was made that they would give you agreements, official agreements, to maintain a stormwater system. And this stormwater system on one 3R lot is not just the one basin that's new. That other basin is on the northwest side, I believe it would be, of Kaywood North. And there's a huge basin out there as well. So, there's also a smaller basin at the former Montclair-Andrea Way intersection that has to be maintained as well. So, and I also have a water line that comes down across there that's on all of the plants. So, that's in and of itself another thing for me to be considering when that property is sold. However, for those of us as landowners adjacent and taxpayers, there's an expense here that's going to be brought to bear in the future if we don't do something right now that's required by the state. And I know that the state district office has had a lot of changes as far as personnel, so I just want to be sure that inasmuch as your notice for the parkland tonight prompted me to think about this, I wanted to get in here and find out what's going on and whether that parkland has anything to do with that. Does that parkland complete this project? Because if it does, you still have things that need to be addressed officially and legally. And I don't know who this is addressed to.
I'll just mention that we got the email this afternoon from Ms. Hubbard. We have not, I've not had a chance yet to talk with our engineer about this, just to find out the status. As far as I'm aware, all of the agreements that were required last year have been taken care of, but that's something I want to verify, and I'll follow up with an email. The parkland tonight is, that's a later item on the agenda, was simply something that was required of the property owner. It's a very small sliver of land. It's less than half of a tenth of an acre. I think what you referred to in your email was actually a much larger piece associated with Kaywood North.
That's, that's one R, R, three Rs.
Well, the one piece that was going to be given to the park.
Yeah, that's not the part, that's not what I was talking about. The one that's, the one that's to be given tonight, I understand, is the one that's adjacent to the existing park, and it's a long strip of land.
It is not a very long strip of land, no. What is proposed tonight as being dedicated is a very small sliver. Matter of fact, I can, I have it on my screen here. I can just make it easy and share it. So this is Montclair Lane right here. This is Montclair, right here is the cul-de-sac. The piece of land that's being given is this little sliver that goes here between the road and the parkland that's right here. So I think that long piece you were referring to is this area right here. That was actually given to the township several years ago and accepted several years ago. This little piece is what was associated with Kaywood North Estates, and like I said, it's .055 acres.
Is that at the parking lot?
No, this is to the north of the parking lot. So essentially, if you were to come down the roadway here, I think it's Andrea?
Yeah.
Yeah, Andrea Way, right here where it intersects with Montclair. There's a gentleman that has a very big garden right here, and it's right north of that garden. It's just a little strip they gave for basically a walking path, so people could just walk straight across from the road to the park.
It's a muddy mess up there right now, so walking is an interesting statement, but you know my concerns, and I would like to see those, those documents.
Yeah, I'll follow up with you, hopefully tomorrow.
Okay, and I mean, I can come over too, but I would like to have copies of whatever's been drafted. All right, so thank you for your time, all of you, and I'm going to have to go because I hurt my foot and it needs elevated, and I, I trust you to do a good job tonight with the park, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, see if we have new agenda item possibility according to Pennsylvania Act 65. Anybody have any agenda items they'd like to add? Moving right along then. Okay, moving to township business. First is proclamation honoring the Center Area Transportation Authority's 50th anniversary. So, Center Area Transportation Authority will celebrate its 50th anniversary on May 17th, 2024. The township will issue a proclamation honoring this milestone, and I will read this proclamation for the record. Harris Township, Center County, Pennsylvania. A proclamation honoring the Center Area Transportation Authority's 50th anniversary. Whereas the Center Area Transportation Authority, CADA, has been an integral part of our community for half a century, providing essential transportation services to residents and visitors. And whereas CADA's commitment to sustainability, accessibility, and efficiency has contributed significantly to the well-being of our region. And whereas CADA's orange and white buses have become iconic symbols of the center region, connecting neighborhoods, campuses, and beyond. And whereas CADA's growth from its humble beginnings in 1974 to its current status as a joint municipal authority reflects its resilience and adaptability. And whereas CADA's dedication to serving Penn State University students, faculty, and staff has fostered a strong partnership between the university and the community. And whereas CADA's park and ride program, paratransit services, and innovative routes have enhanced mobility options for all. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of Harris Township, in conjunction with the surrounding townships and boroughs, hereby celebrates and honors CADA's 50th anniversary on May 17th, 2024. Be it further proclaimed that the Harris Township Board of Supervisors commends CADA staff, drivers, and leadership for their unwavering commitment to excellence and their role in shaping our vibrant community. Dated this 13th day of May, 2024. Is there somebody here to accept this?
We do have a question from...
Imagine. All right.
We just have to post a picture.
We'd like to thank you very much for this. We appreciate it. CADA is very excited to be celebrating our 50 years, and part of that celebration on Monday, May 20, we'll be hosting a community event at CADA's headquarters off Whitehall Road from 3:00 until 7:00. We have Bus One, which was one of the first buses used by CADA, that is functioning and will be running laps around the block. We'll have opportunities to go through the bus, bus wash, I keep wanting to call it a car wash, the bus wash. We'll have games for kids and memorabilia to share with you, so we hope you come out and celebrate with us. Thank you.
Interestingly enough, when I was in college, I drove part-time for CADA, and I would have driven that Bus One quite often.
Our maintenance crew cleaned it up. It's beautiful.
Oh, that's great.
Thank you.
All right. So next, Resolution 2406, adopting the CADA local match share.
CADA's member municipalities are required to provide local matching funds related to financial assistance provided by the state. For the past year, CADA and the Center Region Municipal Managers met to determine an updated formula for the local match share. The previous formula was based on fixed route service and did not take CADA GO into consideration. The agreed-upon formula, funding formula, is based on the percentage of the total population for the member municipalities. With this formula, the township would pay 6.3% of the proposed local match. The resolution for the township's local match is included with the agenda along with details on how the local match was allocated amongst the municipal members. Based on the proposed local match, the township will pay $42,478 in operating funds and $4,536 in capital funds. And Mr. Dave Richel is here this evening from CADA to provide you with a brief presentation. So I will go ahead and share my screen so you can do that.
Good evening. Thank you, Mark, and Mr. Chair. I want to give you a little update on our year at CADA and answer any questions you may have. It has been a, I would say, year of rebuilding. Go ahead to the next slide. Kind of four main points you want to hit this year, tell you some highlights of what we've accomplished in the year, talk to you about our 2025 proposed budget, talk to you a little bit about some service changes that will be impacting the township, and then answer any questions about local match if you have any. So a few highlights for this year. We did a, well, let's see. We implemented a new software system that's used for CADA GO. It's a company called Via, and it gives more capabilities to passengers using GO. Later this year, we're going to be able to actually coordinate for people who want to connect to buses, the software will do it for you. So you can say which bus you want, and it'll arrange your pickup time so that you can make that coordination. We also frankly struggled this past year because we've been short drivers and continue to be short drivers, and it reached a point by the late fall where we realized that we needed to make some minor adjustments to our service schedules. So in January, we implemented some service changes, basically kind of refinements to the existing routes, to get our service package to the point where we could comfortably meet our requirements every day without having tremendous overtime. We have stabilized our driver force, and actually, for the first time in, I think, many years, if ever, we are offering a summer route, a specific route that's operating during the summer. It's being paired with our youth pass program, and it really replaces some of the Penn State subsidized loop services in downtown State College, and then comes out to Westerly Parkway, serves a swimming pool, goes a little bit through Ferguson Township. So it's an experiment, just running a couple of buses this year to see how that works and to see how customer response is. We also started a new process this year, which I think Lori was here a couple of weeks ago to talk to you about some service change ideas that we had for the coming fall. In the past, CADA has developed those internally, and we haven't really come out and talked to you about our thoughts about service changes before implementing them. We are trying to change that, or we are changing that. So from this point forward, anytime we're contemplating making any kind of service changes in your municipality, we're going to come and talk to you first, get your thoughts, suggestions, and your input before we can move forward with anything. And let me also update you with what's going on in Bellefonte, Benner, and Spring Township. That's been in the news this year quite a lot. As you probably recall, the services in those areas are provided under contract by CADA. Those three municipalities contract with us. Spring Township decided a little bit more than a year ago that they were going to leave the CADA system. They reaffirmed that, so as of July 1st, all service in Spring Township will end. Bellefonte and Benner Township are still in the program. However, we've talked with them about their contribution amounts, and I know this has been a conversation among you folks in the past, questioning how much they're providing. They were not providing enough support for the services we are providing, so we are, quite frankly, cutting service to that area back almost 90% as of July 1st. Rather than having several vehicles running all day, we are now going to be running two and a half hours in the morning and two and a half hours in the afternoon with local limited service. But we're still able to make free connections to the fixed route system at the Nittany Mall, so people can still come back and forth. This will not impact people here in Harris Township who might want to go over to Bellefonte. That service will remain the same as it is now, so no impact on the, on the members. Essentially, we, we said to these folks as contract municipalities, their obligation is to provide a 30% subsidy for the services. So we took our costs, we apply state and federal subsidies, and the remaining 30% that's uncovered after fares, they have to provide. So that's how we came up with how much is being provided there. So fairly significant cutback there, and I can answer questions if you have any more about that. Next slide. Few other quick things. I won't read all these things down, but quite a lot of community outreach this year. And most recent, most recently, we spent some time last week in Harrisburg. The governor has proposed a fairly significant increase to public transit funding, and I'm sure he won't get what he wants entirely, but it looks like there will be a passage of some increase this year, and we'll update you whenever we hear about that further. Next slide. So our budget for this year is $26.2 million. Here's our operating costs. If you have a great memory, you could remember that our CADA GO costs from last year were almost half of that. This is a per-unit cost, an hourly cost of service. Because we are cutting back so much service in the Spring, Benner, and Bellefonte area, the hourly costs have gone up because of their overhead. That's going to come down as we further expand services. Excuse me. Pretty typical revenue breakdown in terms of subsidy, about $15.2 million from state and federal government, about $2.7 million from fares that we collect. $5.7 million comes from Penn State and from arrangements we have with apartment buildings that bypasses from us for people. The green is advertising and other revenue. And something we're very happy about this year is last year our deficit was $1.8 million. This year, we have reduced it to $747,000. So we've more than halved our deficit, and if we're able to continue managing as we have been, we hope that that will go down to zero this year. Next slide. So a few highlights of changes. Reduced our deficit 1.1 million. We actually are reducing our overall budget by $426,000 this coming fiscal year. At the same time though, we've had an increase in ridership of more than 6%, so we are continuing to grow and get ridership back. The apartment pass program I mentioned, where apartments purchase passes from us, we've been able to increase the fees for that program 10%, and Penn State's contract increase this past year was an 8% increase, and we are negotiating with them now for this year's increase. Next. And some statistics, we had a review by PNDOT just about a month and a half ago, and they reported some things that we thought were true, but they've now confirmed in writing that CADA is the most cost-effective transit system in Pennsylvania, including all transit systems. A few highlights there. We provide 35.2 passengers per hour. The next closest is SEPTA in Philadelphia. They do 23.4 per hour. Our cost per passenger is the lowest in the state at $4.26 a passenger. The next higher is SEPTA at almost double the cost of CADA. We also do a very good job of that apartment program and our contracts with Penn State. We raise a lot of revenue to cover our operating costs, and we're able to cover almost 35%, more than a third of our operating costs with revenue that we generate locally, and that's the highest in the state. The next closest is the system in Williamsport. They do about a quarter. The rest of it is subsidy. And our subsidy per trip, this is the state and federal dollars that we require for every trip we provide, is the lowest in the state, only $2.79. only $2.79. SEPTA's the next closest to us at $6.32, so we're doing fairly well. And this comes up a lot. Frank, I've talked to you about this. There's a question of what CADA is doing today in Harris Township, and how does that compare to what we did in the past? So we broke down the numbers, and hopefully you'll find this interesting. In 2018-19, which is the last time we operated the P and B lines out here, this is the regular bus, we provided about 10,000 trips, just over 10,000 trips, and the cost per trip at that time was $28.25. Today, we're using CADA GO to serve the whole area. We've actually provided more service, 11,854 trips, and that number is literally going up almost every day. And that comes out to a cost of $22.69 per trip. So we are spending less money and providing a lot more service to the township. And if you correct the cost per trip for the Consumer Price Index, in today's dollars, that cost per trip would be $35.12. So that was in 2018, 2019 dollars. So what we're doing today for Harris Township is more service for less money, and from the feedback we've been getting from passengers, a pretty high level of satisfaction. So just wanted to share that. Couple of service changes that are going to impact the township. We are starting experimental pilot program based on feedback from riders. There are people who want to go from the township into town directly, because they're probably going to campus or right to the downtown area. So to save them having to connect with the bus at Hills Plaza, we're going to start limited service directly into the library on Beaver Avenue. So that should be a significant increase in inconvenience to passengers here. We're also, we're still going to maintain the connection to Hills Plaza because there are some people that might be going out Atherton and going to other places. So you have a choice of which one you want to do. Yeah, this is kind of broadly. We're improving the frequency on the Atherton connector, so we'll have more bus service going back and forth, up and down Atherton. We are also going to be experimenting with the same kind of CADA GO Express service into the downtown core area from Center Area West, which is out in Patton Township. And in College Township, we are finally bringing some CADA GO service to College Township. They'll be able to get to Medler Field on CADA GO. So trying to improve the ability of people to get into the downtown area, whether they're on bus or CADA GO. Mark already mentioned this. I'm not sure we need to go over it, but we had quite a lot of discussions with the local managers on what is a kind of a more fair and appropriate way to figure out how to break down the share of local match. And in doing research, what almost every other state and federal program uses is population. So we talked to the COG or the MPO and said, you know, what are the population numbers that are agreed in the region to be used? We did take out the student population that is residential on the campus because Penn State pays its own share of local match, and we have a contract with them. It's kind of an apples-to-oranges combination, so they're taking care of that. So the remaining population, we just broke it down proportionally, and the smallest portion of population is here in Harris, so you folks pay the smallest portion of the match. And just a reminder, for every dollar that you contribute to us in local match, that ends up being $26.10 of service that we can provide. Your money releases all that federal and state money to us. Without that, we don't get it. And as Mark said, your proportion of the local match this year is 6% based on your population of 5,916. I had a question of how are we going to address this year to year? The MPO looks at the population and how it's changing, and so we'll adjust it based on their estimates of whatever the population change would be. We don't do population estimate. We're a transit authority, so we're going to rely on the people who know how to do that. And yeah, that's 42,000 is what we're asking for you to contribute now for operating, and capital is 4,536. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from the board? Go ahead, Bruce.
Two items. One is just for clarification. Did I understand that your software now allow people to identify the bus route they're interested in connecting to, and then get an optimal CADA GO connection?
It will. We're working on that now.
Rather than standing around in Hills Plaza for...
Yes.
Very nice.
Yeah, there's a, this is down in the weeds. I could talk to you more about it afterwards, but there's a national data standard that our tracking system for our buses uses that's available to the public. So the new Via software is going to be able to use that, we hope by the end of the summer or by fall, so that it will know when the next bus is coming, and we can time that connection.
Sounds great. I mentioned that, I remember our conversation last year was a little confrontational.
I didn't think it was confrontational.
I looked over the minutes from last year just to see where we're going and stuff like that. And what I see this year is pretty straightforward, direct, and fair, and I applaud you for listening. Thank you.
Thank you, absolutely. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I just, I want to play catch-up for a minute. What was our contribution last year?
I don't have that.
It was right around 40,000. I don't have the exact number, but right around 40,000, I believe.
Okay. Are you saying that our township has become more efficient in the use and thereby lowering the cost of CADA? Because we're more efficient, is that what I'm taking away from this?
Well, the services we provide here are more efficient as they get busier. Ironically, the services we provide here in Harris Township are the most expensive of any of the five member municipalities because all the service here is microtransit.
Yeah, but the microtransit is not necessarily our fault because of the decrease in routes elsewhere.
Absolutely. Yes, I wasn't meaning to imply that.
No, no, no. I was just pointing that out.
Yeah, it's, we've used, we've put microtransit here because it's the most cost-effective way to serve the most number of people and a broader service area than the routes.
And also, it's my understanding that you took away routes in like the Ferguson Township area that they want you to bring back. Is that still, are you bringing routes back in that area as well?
In January, we cut back. The College Connector used to go all the way out to our headquarters, essentially, and there was very little ridership on that route. So that was one of the things that we trimmed in January. We did bring that back a little bit, and now that we've got our driving force in better shape, we're bringing that back in the fall.
And what does that do to the efficiency and then changes of structure and use?
Honestly, it makes us a little bit less efficient, but you know, when we figure out where to run buses, it's a combination of cost and coverage. And there are enough people who are living out in that area and want to use that service. We think that that is reasonable. If your service levels get to be too high with a service like CADA GO, then you get to a point where it is cheaper to run a bus. And so we're kind of always looking at that ridership to see what is the most economical thing to do to those sort of people.
And so just because I don't know anything about this, there is no, correct me if I'm wrong, there is no transportation then to the, what is it, the jail, the county?
No, there is still.
There is still? Okay.
Yes. Yeah, especially from here.
I'm here because of the proximity.
Yeah, if people want to travel from here to the county jail, you would just schedule that as normal. It's another thing that our new software lets us do, is we know people are, where people are coming from, so we can track that. There would be no problem. The only thing that could affect that is, in the future, if Harris Township, I'm not Harris Township, sorry, if Benner Township or Bellefonte didn't want to stay in the CADA system, then we couldn't serve those areas. We're not allowed to operate in those areas unless we have a contract with the municipality to operate there. But for now, should be no problem.
Thank you.
Yeah, my pleasure.
My turn. I have to agree with Bruce on one thing. I see vast improvement over last year. I'm happy to see that we're going to Sklo Library. I think that's a plus. But I still have to come back to this funding formula. I heard it at the Finance Committee, I heard the Miller formula the other day about Crook, but you know, I know we've...
Miller formula's long gone.
We've talked about this over the years, but again, I'm looking at our number versus Bellefonte. And we have 5,900 people, and I know they have a lot more than 5,900 people, yet they're at 30,000, we're at 42,400. And I, every time I look at that, and I know what we get for being a member, but it's just like, do we, should we contract these things you're giving us, or, you know, do we move on? I just think that that formula still needs some work. I would look at how many, what percentage of the assets are per, like how much is in Harris Township, percentage of the total assets? How much is in Ferguson, Downtown, and Penn State? If 90% of the assets are used for students, and 90% of your operators are used for students, well, it seems to me that 90% of the cost should come from that usage. And that's where, that's just where I'm coming from.
That's very reasonable.
That's my comments. I don't want to get into the weeds, but that's where I'm still thinking.
I will also say that I agree with this comment. I also understand there's a little bit of...
Well, there's a, it's a very apples-to-oranges comparison this year, because in the past, I would have agreed with you. Then, in fact, that's why we had the conversations with the three current active municipalities, because they really were not paying enough into the system. Although Bellefonte is paying a little over $30,000 this year, they're paying that for essentially a vehicle and a half to operate five hours a day. And service here is two vehicles, sometimes more, that operates from early in the morning until late at night all day. So it's a vast difference in the amount of service that you're getting.
Again, I'm talking buses and drivers.
Anybody else? You've all covered everything. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment?
All right, I'll make the motion. We pass Resolution 2406.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous.
Thanks very much. Hope to see you Monday. Please come to the celebration.
Monday, pardon?
The 50th anniversary.
I get to go through the bus wash.
I drive shuttlebus.
Next on the agenda is the Center Region COG 2025 through 2029 Capital Improvement Plan.
So the COG Executive Committee recently forwarded the 2025 through 2029 COG Capital Improvement Plan, or CIP, to the Center Region Municipalities for review and comment. The information contained in the 2025 to 2029 CIP is based on recommendations from the facility, condition assessments, age condition of equipment, and new or replacement vehicles, equipment needed. The recommendations in the CIP will be included, or are included in the 2025, or will be included in the COG 2025 COG Program Plan. Staff did contact Kimberly McMullin, the COG Finance Director, for clarification on the proposed increase in municipal shares. Ms. McMullin clarified that the estimated municipal shares line graph on Page 4 includes regional parks, but the historic municipal shares line graph on Page 5 does not. So the township's municipal shares for capital improvements, including those related to regional parks, would increase by $6,500 or 3.92% between 2024 and 2025. A copy of the CIP is included with the agenda, and municipal comments related to the CIP are due to the COG Executive Director and Finance Director by noon on May 16th. Eric Morinberg, the COG Executive Director, is here this evening to discuss the proposed CIP and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mark. Good evening, everyone. We also have our Library Director and our Parks and Rec Director here to help answer any questions about those programs. So we're looking forward to chatting with you tonight. I think there's a few slides that Finance Director prepared, so maybe we can go through the first couple of those. I think we'll just hit maybe the first three or four. First one on the, on the set is just the table of contents. There we go. So that's just the table of contents for this set of slides. We'll just quickly go to the next one. And here is just a comparison over the past few years showing the Harris Township participation in the COG CIP budgets. And so you see a few areas where it's gone up, and each of these relates to the specific program. So there's small increases, pretty level for the library, Parks Capital catching up a couple of years ago, the pools leveling out, and the, you know, the increase in a couple of places in the nature center that dipped back down. So Regional Parks shows an increase, a small increase for next year. So if you do any questions, when we get to that point, we can cover those. Mark, if we can go to the next slide. This line chart has been one that has been interesting for folks to look at from other municipalities. I'm sure most of you understand the first couple of data points on the Harris Township total expenditures, the blue line, and the Harris Township general fund expenditures. A couple of years ago, that was related to the construction of your new Public Works facility, and that dips down. And I think Mark will confirm that if it was not for the expense of that project, those two lines would be a lot more leveled out in 2020 and 2021. The other line, the key line there at the bottom, is the gray line that shows COG municipal support that stays pretty level, small increasing amount, but keeping level and even with your municipal total expenditures. And I don't know if we need to really go into too many of the other ones, but if you, you'll have that reference material in your packet and available if we need to come back to that. But Mr. Chair, I'm not sure if you have a preference as to how you'd like to go through this program by program, if you want to ask us questions, or how you'd like to go on. We don't have anything more really prepared, but I know we can go through the comment guide that was provided and focus on anything that's specifically for 2025, and then maybe the out years if there are any questions on that.
What does the board think? Do you want to just, anybody have questions they just want to ask, or should we go through the?
I don't, I don't need to go through every section, but I, I think that most of the comments I have are pretty much the same. But I, you know. What do you think, Bruce? You want to go through each section?
I'd like to hear your comments first.
Okay. All right.
Take the deepest end of this.
Okay. Well, not always. Well, you know, I just, as I read through this, and I have to admit, I'm on the finance, so I'm into the rest of the budget, too. And so the one thing that keeps striking me on this is it's like we're getting a Christmas list, and we can't say no. And I just, to the point where, no, we don't, we don't need that. Like, the one thing I looked on here was the AV improvements to the meeting room, and I'm not sure why we need those. I mean, my goodness, that, that meeting room is so high-tech, and then I hear, well, some people can't, don't get good reception when they, they attend a meeting from Zoom. Well, guess what? We should be in person. Our responsibility is to go to these meetings, participate, and be there in person. If, if we can't do that, and we have, and be adequate on Zoom, then we have the responsibility to be there in person. And I don't want to keep putting 75, 25, 50. Every year, it seems like we have to put more into this audiovisual system. I happen to think it's, it's good. I also was on the Facilities Committee, and I remember we talked about the parking lot. I'm not sure the parking lot needs repaved yet. It might need reseal. And if we can reseal it and save the money and pass it down, then I think we should do that. I see stuff in here for new furnitures and new, new places. Well, guess what? I don't get new furniture every year in my house, you know? Clean it up, fix it up. And how many people come and sit in the furniture? Now, the library, I might be a different story, but how many people come to the COG building and sit on the furniture? Maintain what you have. We don't need to keep every year adding more things, and it seems like we, everything we do has to be top shelf. And I'm just thinking, we gotta, we gotta step back, folks, because the well's drying up. And it's coming to the point, and this could be the year where we, instead of this, you're going to get, here's how much money you're getting. You make it work. And I don't want to have to get to that point, but that's where we're heading. And as, like I said, Bud always said, pick, pick what you want. Well, I can go through here and cross off a lot of things that really are not essential. I mean, they're nice to have, and we're trying to fund too many niceties. I mean, they're nice to have, and we're trying to fund too many niceties. The other thing I see in this thing, that until we get a drawing and finalize, this is what we're going to do, and this is when we're going to start it, get the Millbrook Marsh out of there. Just, and it's, right now, it just looks like this big number that's coming down the road, but we don't even have a plan on, there's not even drawings on what they're going to do yet. That, nobody's made the decision, okay, we're going to do it this day, and we're going, till that happens, it's, it's a pie in the sky thing. Just get it off there. We don't need to look at a big number in two or three years. So I think we need to clean it up a little bit, and I don't think we need as much, I, if you were asking me, I'd say, cut it in half.
Can I say something now?
Yep, you can say whatever you want. I'm done.
All right. So my concern about everything, I get hung up on little things anyway, but my biggest concern is that I believe, and I don't know what every other township pays per dollar to the COG, we pay 23% of our budget goes to the COG. That's a lot of money. 23 cents of every single dollar the council taxpayers goes to the COG. I don't think it's as high in any other township except maybe Half Moon, but they're not participating in everything. And we're a small township. We're a very small township. So if 23 cents of every dollar we bring in goes to the COG, and if other townships have 10 cents at every dollar, or 5 cents at every dollar, why are, why are we paying so much into the COG? If this is what you want, and this is what we feel we need, and this is what other people feel we need, it seems to me that we need to readjust, because we can't, we can't seem to maintain the things that we need to do in our own township as well, because we're small. And, I mean, I get hung up on, why do we have to afford skates? Oh, please give me a break. Can we just get something that's reasonable and good, and good quality? Because they're not. So I, you know, I just get, that's just the one thing I get very hung up on. But there are a lot of things that I've seen here, and I agree, that, you know, we're a government entity. You know, a lifetime for something that's a government entity, we're not, we're not a business. And I guess that's the problem, is like, here's what I see, like, I hear strange things like, oh, well, Park and Recs break even. Well, no, 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 they don't. They break even with municipal shares, and those municipal shares increase every time somebody moves into a township. So they get more and more money, and that's fine. That's fine. I get it, and we want these nice things and everything, but we have to remember what we're doing. And that's my concern for this particular township. And that's probably it, besides some nitpicky things that I don't understand, which I need to ask somebody about, like, electric lawnmowers, which I don't know anything about. So, other than that, I think we're good.
Is that good? Now, you made your decision, Bruce?
You make a decision?
Well, no, I mean, I essentially agree with Frank that we can't do everything, so we need to prioritize. And that's so, you know, it's, it all sounds good. It all sounds wonderful, until you add it up. And when you add it up, there's a big sticker shock. And yeah, we raised taxes last year. I suspect we're going to be raising taxes this year. It's, you know, I'm not sure we can sustain that, raising taxes every year because of the wish list.
And I'm, on top of that, I'm a little bit concerned about what we have to do in this township, for our own safety and our own citizens, and what we need to do, what needs to take place here. I'm very concerned about that.
So I guess I'd say I'd like to see more prioritization.
Okay. Thanks for all your comments. Yeah, I, I kind of agree with everything that was said. I mean, really, it is a wish list, and things can be, the life of things can be extended. I realize there's maintenance involved when you do that, but, but still, we really, this is a vast increase. And according to numbers that Mark shared with me, Harris Township is going to be in trouble, and is going to have to continue to raise taxes, year after year after year. And I'd not like to see that happen, because we want the Cadillac of everything.
I think the only other option besides raising taxes is to back out of programs.
Well, we're either making decisions that way, you know, what, what can't we sustain anymore? Or like, like you said, that, you know, we've got, we've got things we want to improve for our residents, and, and CADA is where everything's going right now, or, excuse me, not CADA, COG is where everything's going right now. You know, we, we've got some things we'd like to, we have had people here tonight talking about speed limits and our own parks, and, and that's the other thing, we pay for all this money and to go to the parks, and I can honestly tell you, the one behind my house isn't well-kept. You know, they run, they run the lawnmower, we saw the other day a guy running the lawnmower down to cut the grass, had a weed eater on the, on the lawnmower right there, never get off and cut any weeds, just ran the lawnmower up and down, and he was gone. And, and so if we're going to pay that much money, as I'm looking at how much we spend for maintenance, are we getting to the point, is it better for us to hire another person and buy a lawnmower? Is that cheaper than putting, I don't remember what it is, 100 and some thousand, I think 120, 130,000 a year? Can we buy, can we hire somebody and get our own lawnmower? I mean, that's what, that's kind of the decisions we're going to be looking at. We're going to have to, we're going to have to cut funds somewhere.
Or we're going to have to figure out something, if there's, perhaps we feel that there's a more equitable way to divvy up the shares. Because I don't know if that's something that should be looked at, too. Because if we, if we as a township are paying this amount for every dollar that we collect in taxes into the COG, versus another township, which is paying significantly less for every dollar they take in to the COG, and we, and is this, is this right? Is it fair? Is it, I don't know. Is it right to say, just because our citizens, maybe, maybe they make more money, or whatever it is that goes into that formula, is it right to say that we have to increase taxes so dramatically, you know, that's going to affect, we have people all across the board as far as income, and as far as housing, as far as this and that, and our taxes are pretty much equitable with every other township? Why should we be the ones that have to do that if, you know, if we are a smaller township, and we are more subject to this because we're paying more percentage-wise?
You know, I think the one thing we all have to keep in mind is that COG was put together by the townships to save money. And it is becoming a burden on us. We did that so that we could, we could pool our resources and save money, and it's becoming a burden. It, it could come to, come down to us sitting in a room and saying, okay, this year, here's how much we're giving COG. Or we might be saying, we're giving COG 20% of our budget, or 15, that's all we can afford. And we'll, we'll give it to them and let them deal, because that's what it's coming to. We're not going to be able to keep raising taxes and just keep throwing more money in there. Somebody needs to get control of it, and, and that's kind of what we're going to have to say. We're going to, we have to take a hard stance.
One, one comment, Tracy, I need to correct you on this. Harris Township is actually, I think, the lowest overall tax rate in the region.
Well, when I talked to Mark this evening, we were lower, but equitable. Was that correct, or did I misunderstand that?
No, I think there's some municipalities might be a little lower than us. I'm not certain on the actual real estate tax rate. I'd have to go.
When you, when you look at the real estate and combine the, with the home rule and the borough, their income taxes, and ours are low, because we're still a second-class township. When you take the whole tax package, Harris Township is, is low.
What I was saying was not so much that. What I was clarifying is we only, that, the local taxes, we can only collect so much because we are a second-class township. So when you, when you compare it, we still, you know, we can't get any more.
Right. Unless we went home rule or real estate taxes, which is.
Yeah.
What we have to do.
And then that pushes us above other townships, but maybe, you know.
But overall, residents in Harris paid a less percentage of tax than others, if you include property and income taxes, anyway. So, any other questions, concerns? Eric would like to speak some more, I guess?
Well, so I know I wasn't asked this question, but several people made a comment along the lines of a wish list, a Christmas list, or something like that. The Finance Committees, past and present, have asked us to use the five-year capital improvement program as a way to identify anticipated needs in particular years. So when we think we will need to replace something, when we think something will need to be added to, or otherwise purchased. So that's the, that's the reason for the five years. It's a five-year forecast, so as items appear in, in later years and they start moving their way forward, we look at the items, maybe it's a truck, or it's a piece of electronic projector for the, the general forum room, or something like that. We get to the point when it's a year out, we look and we say, oh, maybe we can get another year or so out of it. Or actually, it is failing, and we need to, to replace it on schedule. So I would venture to say that a number of the items that are, as we get closer to 2025, because we're still over six months away from next year, because we have to do our capital improvement program so early to factor into the, what the township and municipal budgets are planning, we, we are trying to predict whether we will need to replace certain items a year from now. So if we get into 2025, there may be an item that Jim in Parks and Rec, or Lisa, and somebody in the library, or others, will say, oh, I think we can get another year out of this. So let's push this back from 25 to 26. So there are going to be items that we, we will not need to, to purchase, as you've indicated, but we're also trying to be responsible and not come to you in the middle of the budget cycle in the fall, or, or early next year, and say, we, we missed it, we, we should have put that truck in there, or we should have planned for this other thing to be purchased, so we need to make a budget amendment. So we're trying to be as careful about planning for the future, not necessarily wishing for everything, but identifying what things do we have that may wear out and may need to be replaced next year, or be added because we're taking on new facilities or new responsibilities. So I just want to kind of correct that misperception. Frank mentioned the, the parking lot. That was studied in 2020 and recommended, because it will, the parking lot will soon be over 20 years old. We should be planning to look at a partial resurfacing, because we have areas where there is settling and some base, base failure, so that we may need to cut out some of it, and may need to have it re-surfaced in that area, built back up, and then a new surface coat go over the top, so that we avoid the ponding and degradation of the asphalt in that area, and do the whole thing at that point. And that's what was recommended in 2020, so certainly, I'm going to be consulting with the, one of the township engineers to see if they can give us another read on it. But that parking lot project has been kind of inching its way closer to 2025 for the past couple of years, as a projected project, so that we take care of the assets that we have, and we don't let them be neglected, and then have more costs in the future. So we're trying to be responsible with the dollars and not wasteful. So, thank you.
I'll ask one question there for you. Where do we stand on a facilities director?
Well, the, we were scheduling to replace that position in the spring. We've updated the job description, but because of the planned recruitment for the next executive director, we proposed that we wait and fill that position after the next executive director starts, so that, that new direct, executive director can be part of the recruitment and hiring of that position.
The only reason I said that is when we had a facilities director, I'm going back to Lou, we saved money. You know, we, we had one thing they threw on, on our plate that there was $300,000 or $400,000 that the windows would be replaced, and I think we fixed them and made them just as good as they knew for $15,000 by going to the vendor. So I think we need a facilities director. They've saved money.
So it was Lou that recommended that we reseal the parking lot in 2021, to get a few more years' life out of it before we need to replace it in 25 or 26.
And then we said we would reevaluate it in 25 or 26.
Correct. And, and that's where we are right now. So if there are no more, more questions, we'll let you get on with your meeting, then thank you.
Back to the Volksburg Pike. Proposed ordinance 364, amending several sections of Chapter 8 motor vehicle and traffic, including reducing the speed limit on Volksburg Pike. I don't think we have to read the whole thing again, because it was read earlier for the public hearing. So I'd be happy to entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll move that we approve proposed ordinance 364, amending several sections of Chapter 8 motor vehicles and traffic.
Second.
All right. Any other comments from the board or the public? All right. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Okay, grass and weeds and other revegetation rewrite.
Yeah, take the re out of that vegetation.
Okay.
That was a misspelling. At the April Board Meeting, staff proposed to rewrite the section of the Harris Township ordinance that regulates grass and weed growth. The section is 46 years old and has seen few modifications through the years. The board directed staff to present a draft rewrite at this meeting. Staff reviewed the ordinances from the other Center Region municipalities and some other outside sources, and composing the revised section. The major changes to the existing ordinance include deleting the findings and purposes in the restrictions sections, adding a definitions section, adding a section titled unlawful growth of noxious vegetation, amending the exceptions section to clarify where the regulations will not be enforced, clarifying who is responsible for maintaining grass, weeds, and other vegetation on properties, adding a recommendation that the height limit on grass, weeds, and other vegetation be reduced from 12 inches to 8 inches, adding a section that creates regulations for managed alternate planting areas, or whatever you want to call it, sections of otherwise regulated properties that are designed and maintained in a more natural manner as rain gardens, meadow vegetation, pollinators, or ornamental gardens, adding a recommendation to reduce the penalties for a violation of the section from a $1,000 fine and/or 90 days in jail to a $250 fine and/or 10 days in jail. We'll talk about this a little later when we talk about what we've discussed with our township solicitor so far. Staff has discussed this draft internally, and we communicated with the local district justice for some guidance on legal procedures. Additionally, we intend to work with the township solicitor, and we've already started that, to determine if different alternatives exist for providing notifications for those properties that habitually fail to comply with the regulations. If an alternative exists to address a situation that a property owner pays the fine for a citation but does not bring the property into compliance, other than the township mowing or paying for the mowing of the property, and if the collection of costs for township involvement in requiring compliance can be in a form other than addition to fines. Before I read the recommendation, the, the item about the reduced fine, we actually had a preliminary discussion with our solicitor. He recommends keeping it at $1,000. I don't think he feels as strongly about the 90 days in jail. I think trying to put somebody in jail for three months for not growing, mowing their grass is probably a little overkill, to say the least. But his, his rationale is that if, one of the problems we, we described in that last paragraph, if they don't mow their grass, and they pay the fine, if the fine is escalating till you get to a point where it's a maximum fine, that's probably more impetus for the property owner to mow their grass than $250. So we, we would, we would, at this point, recommend that we stick with $1,000 maximum fine, but reduce the jail time to 10 days, or whatever you feel comfortable with.
So the maximum fine is $1,000?
Yes.
Where does it normally start?
It can start wherever you or the district justice want it.
So I could pay 200, not cut my grass all summer, pay 250 bucks, go to jail for 10 days, and still get to play golf the next summer, right? Is that what you're telling me?
We have the ability to talk to the district justice and recommend.
I was just checking.
In your case?
What about allowing the grass to go to seed once a year? I think that's another good idea.
Well, if you, if you can come up with some wording to add that to the draft, feel free. But the, but the rec, staff's recommendation is to discuss the proposed changes and provide input. We can prepare a final version pending completion of our discussions with the township solicitor and your recommendations for adoption at the June meeting.
So I guess, Mike, so what you're saying is, this is pretty close to what we want? You're just going to have the solicitor look at it? Is that what you're telling me?
I think this is pretty close to what we're proposing. This is a sort of a conglomerate. I, I think this is pretty close to what we're proposing. This is a sort of a conglomeration of center region municipalities. It got rid of some of the stuff. It just doesn't really mean anything anymore. Uh, it's, it's more modern. It, it takes into account things that people are actually regulating in the 2020s. Um, and it does so in a more concise manner. If you have anything that you feel you don't want or you want to add to, please feel free to let us know.
What is noxious vegetation? Can you give me an example of, I really don't know.
Listen, I mean. Yeah, I, I think the definition there is anything that's not grass, weeds or herbaceous vegetation. Uh, uh, that's not edible or useful or ornamental. So if it's just stuff that's growing there for no good purpose, it can be classified as.
That's my whole backyard.
Well. Maybe your story wasn't so far-fetched, Frank.
Uh, no, comment, I, I, I'm, I'm happy with this because like I said, we haven't updated it for what, 20, 30 years?
Forty-six.
Forty-six. And it does bring us back. I like the idea that there's some, there's some information here, rain gardens and stuff like that, that we really don't have anything now. People just call it, call it a rain garden. So, so I'm, I'm pretty happy with it. I think if the solicitor can get the verbiage right, I don't, I think we could move forward with it. What's your thoughts, Bruce?
Um, yeah, overall, I like it. I get, and I understand that, you know, a lot of this comes down to how we deal with the individuals and being reasonable. I mean, if you look at it in the face of it, you know, it, it says that you got 12 inches of grass, you're going to jail for 10 days. That sounds like, it wouldn't be a good look for us.
No, currently says 90 days.
I know, and that would be a terrible look for us. I understand that the magistrate may not want to cur, you know, use that level of sentence, but so I, I mean, I'm in support. But you can, I, I just add it to the caveat that we have to be reasonable and work with our community and, you know, and not just be heavy-handed because that's not who we are.
And I think we've been very successful in working out issues in 99.9% of all the uh, cases where the grass and weed ordinance is applied through the years. There, there's always that one or two properties a year that we have problems with.
I read the manager's report.
Yeah, and I don't think it's necessarily fair for you all to have to deal with the one or two or three or four properties, you know, that just don't feel like being compliant. And every single time, a letter has to go out or something has to be done. It's not fair to the neighbors. It's not fair to anybody else. So you know, I just would prefer a straight line. This is the way it's going to be and that's the end of it.
See, I, I look at it just like you, you put no parking signs up. Well, we don't have somebody going around looking to see if there's people are parking there. But if there's a problem, we have the signage that we can, we can enforce it. Same thing with here. If a problem comes up, we have, you know, the, the rules and regulations to enforce it. And I think that's all we're looking for here is, is to do that. And I agree, we don't need to be going around, you know, putting little signs in yards because I'd have one in all the time.
Geez, Frank.
I'm going to start looking at your.
I hate cut grass.
Hate it too, but come on. I mean, at least be a little compliant. I try. You could try too.
I try.
You know, the one thing that sort of bothers me, like if we have a, an area we want to, on a property, we want to just leave the natural area, you know, like there's natural boundaries, tree lines and stuff like that. And, you know, all sorts of weird stuff can grow in there. And, um, but yet it's not a nuisance to anybody. But under this ordinance, you could look at that and say, yeah, I don't like that. And because it, you know, we have, I'll confess, we have some vegetation in our side yard and it was carefully planted in the front. Yeah, go ahead.
I'm writing down addresses.
Right. Anyway, um, and they're really cool. They're the little jack lantern plants and they grow up to be, you know, like, so it's a garden area basically. And they grow up to like over a foot tall. But then, you know, you get little teeny, they look like those little, um, paper, um, pumpkins, you know, teeny little things. And they come out in the fall and it's really neat. So, um, I'm going to have to apply, make, get a permit to, to actually have that section of yard. That's what it looks like according to this.
Now, there, there's no permit that would be issued. It's a way to formalize people being allowed to preserve that kind of thing on a property rather than having to cut it down because the ordinance says you can't have anything like that. It's a means of allowing things that we currently don't that people seem to want.
Yeah, like if you walk down Main Street, like, because I walk the dogs down there all the time, there's one of the properties down there, that area between the sidewalk and, and the road, like they have, it's just like a natural kind of thing. It's got the same stuff and it's got the wildflowers and everything. I don't find that obnoxious, ridiculous or anything else. To me, it's just a nice little natural piece of spot.
Yeah, I think I mentioned at the last meeting, we have a couple of properties in the township where this has been done without an ordinance uh, amendment to allow it, where people said, here's what I want to do. How can I do it? And I asked them to provide me something in writing with drawing, showing how it's planned, showing how it's going to be maintained, similar to the way that it's worded in this ordinance. And there are probably two or three, maybe four places in the township where they're doing something similar to this now with the understanding that it's managed.
Well, I mean, we, we put ground cover on areas of, you know, we have, we have our lawn and we have kind of a natural ground cover area inside our fence. That's either pachysandra, myrtle or something like that. It doesn't grow that tall, but, um, you know, stuff like that. But other, you know, weeds can grow up in here and here and there and sort of natural areas and what do you, some of them are okay, some of them aren't, but where do, where do you draw the line? You know, come in, you know, like, and then the other thing, so this could be a problem with the stormwater facilities that aren't well-maintained and there's no way to um, get them maintained because there's no homeowners associations active in the areas. This is including right next to my backyard. That would, it is totally out of compliance right now. And, you know, it doesn't bother me because it's just like a natural meadow. I don't care. But, you know, where do you draw the line? I don't, I don't, I don't want you going back and looking at that and say, you know, who's going to, who's going to mow that? Nobody's going to mow that. Because there's no money to mow it from the homeowners association because it's totally defunct. And it's like, and I've brought this up before. How do we manage these facilities that like this, I'm sure there's more in the township that are like that, that have no way, no way of enforcing or collecting dues for their homeowners associations. There isn't one. And that was the way they were put together like in the mid-eighties when the development next to mine came to be. So.
Yeah, that, that basin's been orphaned for 20 years or more.
Oh, yeah.
And I don't think the township's ever required anybody to do anything. We've tried to work with a couple of people that were trying to reactivate the homeowners association, but it's never been fruitful.
No, it doesn't work. And I won't make, say names, but we've had a person that's gone in there, had a kind of, as hard with a brush hog a couple of times a year to clear it out. But it's sort of pointless.
Yeah. And he did it at his cost too.
It's not hurting anything. And keep in mind also, you know, mowing, you know, lawns are, are not good for the environment.
Do they are?
No, lawns are not good for the environment. Natural, reducing the amount of grass you have in your yard is actually a good thing because it, you know, it create, it requires energy to, um, to trim it down. So um, other options would be nice.
Well, they do a nice job. I will say this. They do a nice job on Fasit Park. They have these, one of the four strips. I love those four strips. They're just, there's grass in between them. They have nice vegetation. It's natural vegetation. And they just let them grow. Are you familiar?
I don't know that particularly.
Yeah, it's just, it's a really nice natural point. And we, we ended up with, you know, besides vegetation, which we had animals and I think we had deer there one year and in that area, the mom had babies there. Um, so you know, I just, I think that's, that's the kind of thing that I think we're talking about more.
Sure. So of course, Fasit Park is ours. So does that mean Marco's in jail?
Can I go? Because it's in my neighborhood.
Don't let Frank and I share myself.
Well, you can send me because it's in my neighborhood and I'll go take a vacation.
I don't know. My point is I just, I'd like, you know, if you have a lawn, sure, you, you got to keep it to a certain point. But if you have a natural area, just let it, what's the, just let it go natural. And why should we bother enforcing anything about a natural area that's, you know, just not completely intrusive on, on.
Well, the only thing I would say on that is we, we looked at this for, and I remember it's been several years back where somebody asked us about grass heights, about cutting their, their basin, you know, stormwater basin. And, and we made the recommendation about putting a rain garden in there like they did out there at Home Depot. And I think you or Mark or somebody looked at it and they said that the maintenance on it is once a year or twice a year. You still have to do a little bit in there to keep it from getting overgrown, raggedy or whatever. But it's not nearly what you're cutting the grass every year. You're not cutting it completely down. You just don't hold a weeding or something like that. So there is still some maintenance with some of those to keep them from looking overgrown.
Sure. But stormwater area next to me requires absolutely no maintenance. It's all just grasses that grow there and, you know.
So what do we do here in this? We're just telling you to go ahead with it or are we going to talk about it more?
I wish I could define, you know, like you could define what would be appropriate for a natural area like border, property borders, you know? Uh, I, there's lots of them all over, all over the region, you know? They're just areas that people own that aren't maintained at all. They just let, let them be woods and, um, whatever grows there. And I think that kind of thing should be fine. So.
I mean, I, you know, I think we should move it forward. As I said when we started this, I think it depends upon us to be reasonable. And, you know, and not go out there with a little yardstick in everybody's yard and that kind of thing. And, uh, but, you know, we also want people to be good neighbors. And that's more or less what this is about, is being a good neighbor.
I agree with that.
And as, yeah, protecting the neighbors, people who are being good neighbors.
I mean, I wonder if, if you want to say include an idea like if the, you know, within so many feet of a residential structure, you know, that, um, should, should be maintained to a certain level and you know, pass that.
There, there is something in there. I think there's a 10-foot area around one of these designated areas that has to be either grass or mulch or something that's going to keep what's growing in that area from migrating into neighbors' properties.
Which I like because also in these areas with larger higher grasses, you can end up with more ticks. And I get, I get very concerned with the dogs, you know, my dogs and me or anybody else with ticks.
We have pampas grass that grows 20 feet high in that section of our front yard.
But pampas grass isn't.
It's an ornamental. Yes, exactly.
When was the last time you were up on the hill there, Todd?
Better go up there.
Pretty much every day now. When I'm not in country place.
Come on down.
All right. I admit, I didn't have, I've been really busy lately and really didn't pick through this word for word, but I need to do that. And, um, but yeah, I think we're going in the right direction, especially going down to eight inches from 12 inches. Cause I think I just mowed higher than 12 inches today.
Just turn here and I'll let you take a look.
It's bad. Okay. Anything else?
Move on.
Okay. Moving right along then. So engineering services for maintenance and rehabilitation of the Bollesburg Pike Bridge.
In 2021, a routine inspection of the Bollesburg Pike Bridge over Spring Creek identified several maintenance and rehabilitation tasks that should be completed to extend the lifespan of the bridge and improve overall safety. The report included recommendations that the bridge deck be waterproof and that scour protection be added to the stream channel and bridge foundations. The township plans to repave the portion of Bollesburg Pike that includes the bridge this year. So some of the recommendations in the report should be completed prior to or in conjunction with paving project. The 2024 budget includes $80,000 for the bridge's maintenance and rehabilitation. Stahl Schaefer Engineering submitted a scope of work and fees for, to perform engineering services related to the recommended tasks from the bridge report. The scope breaks down the engineering for rec, uh, for recommendations in the report into separate tasks, allowing us to utilize their firm for specific portions of the project. Township engineer Jerry Northridge recommends that the township utilize Stahl Schaefer Engineering to engineer the waterproofing membrane for the bridge deck at a cost not to exceed $4,850. This will allow the membrane installation and paving work to be completed in order. The firm's proposal, proposal also includes tasks related to engineering scour protection at a potential cost of $11,900. Since the scour protection work can be delayed until later in the year, uh, we intend to negotiate the need for these additional engineering services and request cost estimates from other firms. The township has advertised the Bollesburg Pike and Old Bollesburg Road paving projects, including an alternate for Bollesburg, uh, Pike Bridge repairs for bid. The board will be asked to consider awarding a contract for this project at their June meeting. Um, so it's our recommendation that, uh, the board recommend that township staff work with Stahl Schaefer Engineering to complete engineering for the waterproofing membrane, uh, at the cost that was listed, uh, here in the agenda. Um, and then to negotiate the need of the other components of the project not to exceed an additional $11,900.
Don't move.
Second.
Okay, moved by Frank, seconded by Bruce.
I like to, I think we ought to amend this and just add in, um, at this, where, where we say waterproofing for the bridge deck at a cost not to exceed $4,850, just to be clear.
I would, I would agree with that.
Okay.
I, I do have a comment on this.
Yeah.
Uh, one of the things that I did, because I, I learned of this before the MPO meeting last month, uh, this has already been put on the MPO's, um, agenda for going forward because usually it takes five to six years to get a bridge like that. On the agenda to get replaced, repaired, whatever. So, and they've told us that in five or six years, we may be repairing that. So it's on the agenda for the tip. So that, that way it'll follow through and they'll, they'll get it looked at and we can get money for it instead of us having to fit, fit the bill.
Okay. All right. Any more discussion? If it's all in favor.
I have just one question.
Okay.
So we are going to, I just want to make sure what we're doing. We're going to say the 4850 is good for the waterproofing membrane, but as far as the scouring, scour protection at a potential cost of 11,9, we are putting that on hold.
And that's for the engineering services related to that?
The engineering services, okay. Perfect. Okay. So we're just doing the 4850 right now.
Right. What we're going to do is get other costs. It might be that the 11,9 is our best price. So we, what we're asking for is approval to move forward with that because we need to do the scour protection. So we will do our best to get that cost down.
So we just want, yeah, we just want to see what other people will have to offer. Yeah, it's perfect.
Okay. Well, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, resolution 24-07, accepting the deed of dedication for parkland for Kaywood North Estates.
Move to approve resolution 24 dash 07, accepting the deed of dedication for the parkland for Kaywood North Estates.
Second. Oh, she got it. She's got it.
Okay. Okay, yeah. Moved by Bruce, seconded by Tracy. Um, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, resolution 24 dash 08, authorizing the submission of a Greenways Trails and Recreation Program Grant for Tussie Pond Park.
Move to approve resolution 2408, authorizing the submission of a Greenways Trails and Recreation Program Grant.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Frank, seconded by Bruce. Um, discussion on this? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, resolution 24 dash 09, designating May as Bike to Work Month.
Who, me?
Yeah, agreed that. Well, here, I'll read this. Center bikers asked the board to consider designating May as Bike, as Bike Month and May 13th through 19th as Bike to Work Week and May 17th as Bike to Work Day and Center Region Springs Bike Anywhere Friday.
Move to approve resolution 24 dash 09, designating May as Bike Month.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Tracy, seconded by Bruce. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Bollesburg Fire Company requests to use fire police. So.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to note that this particular recommendation is to also include the Pleasant Gap Fire Police as well.
Move to approve the use of Alfa Center Hall, Port Matilda and Pleasant Gap Fire Police for traffic control for the fire company parade on May 25.
Second.
And discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Move to approve the use of Bollesburg Fire Police for the Pleasant Gap Fire Company Parade on June 20.
Second.
Discussion? There are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Move to approve the use of the Bollesburg Fire Police on June 30th, 2024 for traffic control for the Ironman 70.3 Pennsylvania Happy Valley Triathlon.
Second.
All right. Catching on fast, Tracy.
Thanks.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Move to approve the use of the Bollesburg Fire Police for the Winter Fest. At Tussie Mountain on June 13th, June 20th, July 11th, July 18th, August 1st and August 8th.
Second.
Okay, um, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Hi. I just wanna put an exclamation point on it, okay?
Turn your loose now.
All right, we've watched through those really fast. Now, uh, managers report, anything you'd like to highlight?
Yeah, a few things I wanna highlight and also a couple of things I wanted to bring up that I didn't have in my report. Uh, the first is just to give you an update on the executive director recruitment at COG. Uh, we are moving forward with doing our first round of uh, virtual interviews as a selection committee. That will be taking place here this week and next week. Our hope is to have it down to three finalists that will hopefully be interviewed sometime, I'm hoping in June. So that's just a, an update on that. Um, I also wanted to make you aware that the township is gonna be hosting an Arbor Day event on June 8th at Blue Spring Park at 11 o'clock. Uh, we have a, uh, the, the Lions Club is giving 40 seedlings to basically the first folks who show up uh, at the park. And then we're also gonna be planting a river birch that was donated by Green Horizon Landscaping. So we'll have a new tree there in the park uh, on June 8th. I also wanted to mention that, I don't know if you've been aware, that CDT is cutting back on the days that they are gonna do physical publications of their paper. Just due to how we have to do advertising for public meetings, if we have a meeting that pops up that we can't really advertise for appropriately, that's gonna be problematic that we have to wait until we can get it in the next paper. So just keep that in mind that they only, I think it's Wednesdays and Sundays are the only two days that we can physically have it published.
Is there, no, I'm sorry. No, well, is there gonna be, it seems like, we had this discussion, um, like, I can't remember where it was, where um, some townships in fact have absolutely no more like physical newspapers. So where is the discussion point on where we have to advertise and who do we discuss this with? So, so in order for us to do business efficiently?
I think that's a matter to take up with the legislature. They're the ones who pass the laws that require us to advertise. And I know, I don't know how some of those municipalities are gonna handle where they have no paper of circulation. I don't know what their options are.
So the advertisement has to be paper?
Yeah.
So should this be something that um, who can we allocate, not you, but who can we maybe allocate, you know, pushing this forward and saying, you know, what do we do?
I think both PML and PSATs are trying to.
Okay.
Lobby on behalf of municipalities to try to have this looked at and resolved some way.
My, my question is this, uh, since we're, you know, we've gotta do our day. The Gazette comes out every Friday and it's pretty consistent. Why don't we just go to the Gazette or is that, can't we do that?
No, we, that's something we looked into. I, I think there's some question on whether or not the Gazette qualifies under the state law because it's not a.
It's free.
I can't remember exactly.
It's a free publication.
It's a free publication.
Yeah, it's a free publication. It's a mailer. It's not something that's technically a print delivered paper, so.
It's delivered to certain locations. I have a whole bunch of them.
I understand. Yeah, I, we, it's something that I know we talked a little bit about and, and other folks have looked into and didn't feel that that met the requirements, so.
Well, it's circulation. You get, like anywhere, they, they drop them and they're gone before the next Friday comes.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, more people are reading that than they're reading anything.
Sure.
That's probably a better news than.
I also wanted to get feedback on two items here on my manager's report. Number four, I noted that, you know, last month we had a few folks come in and talk about speed humps up on Academy Street. Since that time, I've actually had probably, actually had another one today, another email today from someone asking. I, probably five or six other folks from different neighborhoods saying, well, we also want speed humps in our neighborhood. Um, I'm not suggesting that they're not warranted in all places, but I think based on what other municipalities do, it'd be a good idea for the township to have a traffic calming policy that identifies how we're going to evaluate requests to put out speed humps or any other type of traffic calming there might be. And that's something that staff can put together and bring before the boards. Just there's a process that we go through to make sure that that's the best solution for the problem that might exist there.
I would appreciate that.
Okay.
Very much.
Yeah, it's something I can work with our traffic engineer on. I know he's familiar with them. There's a few others here in the region that we can look at as examples.
I just think that if we're moving forward, we really need to make the best decisions that we can for everybody.
I also wanted to note on number seven on the back here, um, the CRPA did ask that the township indicate if we wish to change our amount of local planning time that we'll purchase in 2025. Right now, we're at 25%. Um, I will point out, as I think all of you are aware, since you were at the general forum meeting, the CRPA is fully staffed right now, so uh, we should hopefully be receiving planning services from them soon. Uh, but wanted to get your feedback. If that's something you wanna talk about at your June meeting or just continue to tell them we'll stick at 25% at this point for the next year?
What's your opinion?
I think it's worthwhile keeping it at 25% uh, and seeing how that goes with their new staffing. I know that there may be other changes though to the program that might necessitate looking at it. For example, if some of the other municipalities that have um, opted to withdraw, if they stick with that choice, uh, I'm not certain how that will impact us budget-wise in future years because of how administrative costs are split out currently.
Uh, we discussed this, it was discussed at a finance committee, cause I asked the question. And the question was, if we're the only one left in it, does that mean our costs are gonna go up because we're gonna be picking up 100%? It, it, it matter of 25% of 100%, you know, it's just gonna, and both Half Moon, believe it or not, and um Ferguson, was it Ferguson?
Patton.
Patton, both said that they are reconsidering. So they, they, they're, if you remember, our 25% doesn't take effect till next January, correct?
Uh, no, I believe we're currently at 25.
Oh, we currently are, cause I, I thought we had to go a year, give a year.
No, I believe what they just realized or decided on last year because everything that was going on, they let the amount.
Right, and but the other guys, I believe, won't be completely dropped out till December.
Correct, they would not be.
And, and so there is some talk that they may re, uh, re, refigure that. So again, I, I think, think you're right. Let's just wait and see what happens for right now, stay where we're at.
Unless anybody has any questions for me, those were the only two items that I wanted to draw to your attention in particular.
Okay. Um, yeah, well, I, before we go, I, I, number four. Okay, uh, and this is kinda, kinda bring up a little bit with, with MPO and whatnot. But uh, the one thing I, I, I look at, when, when I look at that is where does that problem come from? Where do we get all the speed on our streets? And it comes from Bow Avenue. Cause people are flying down there and they decide they turn off and they fly down our streets, whether it's up on the hill, Bollesburg Pike or whatever. I think we, we need to get on this out here and get this calmed. And one of the things that's come up is, is which I was, we gave a presentation and Mark and I have already talked about it, of putting a package together for, it's a, they have grants for, for exactly what we're talking about for uh, community development and, and uh, safety. And we could, we can incorporate that calming out there with our Bollesburg smaller area business plan, which we passed in 2016. It's been sitting on a shelf gathering dust. So we've talked about putting something together that we would get grant money and, and support to make that happen. Cause I think if we calm this whole area, that's what, that's what we've gotta do in the long run. We can put that, all the speed bumps up and everything we want, but people are still gonna come flying down there if they want. Unless we put a speed bump every 30 feet.
Yeah, I guess, I guess that's one thing, but you've also got the problem of people on 45 turning on Main Street and flying down Main Street. You've got the people coming, coming off of 45 this direction, flying through the light and flying down Main Street. So it's not just, it's, we are surrounded and impacted by so many, you know, so many different areas where people. And I don't think people really mean to, you know, go as fast as they do sometimes. I just think that sometimes they're just not paying attention or they're not aware of their speed at the moment or um, whatever. I don't think that people intentionally do. Some people do. But um, but I don't know what you mean by calming the area.
Well, basically what I, what, okay, for lack of a better term, you know, put an overlay around the hill, everything here and, and the roads coming through it. Look, the only people that we want on those roads are the people that live here. You know, if you're gonna, if you're gonna go to down the valley or Lewis Town or whatever, you can go on the bypass. You don't have to come through here. And, and you know, put, go, take, we've talked about taking this down to two lanes with a turning lane and putting bike pass and walk pass. And I think, I think the sooner we do something like that and get that rolling, make it go slower. I don't care how you do it, but put, put enough red lights, stop lines, small, one lane traffic, whatever, so it, so it's a pain to come down through here for most people. They're gonna go the other way.
I don't see that as true. Well, you and I will never agree with, well, on that, never. Cause like my parents live on the one half of State College and they're not going across State College to get on the bypass to go out. They're gonna come this way into Bollesburg and that's what they're gonna do and it's never gonna stop because they, they're not gonna go on Beaver Avenue to go across and then go out that way. Cause there's no reason for them to. It's easier for them to come down here and it's just gonna back up traffic. But I do agree that there are things that we can, can consider and do to make things safer for our citizens. I just don't know. I, I would not know. All I know is speed bumps. That's it. Speed bumps and speed humps, but I don't know what other traffic calming measures there are. But I will say something and this makes me angry to this day. Why on earth do we not have a sign out there that says, "Speed reduced"? I've been asking for it for years, even when, before this sorted, we have no speed reduced to 35 out there. There is no warning. You don't even see that stupid thing until you get halfway down, all the way on the other side of the, almost to the cemetery, before you see that it's 35 miles an hour. And that's a shame and that is wrong.
Yeah, I, I reached out to Penn Dott about that and have not heard back. Cause that was something Nigel mentioned to me a while back and I've pushed them and still also have not heard back on the, on the needs study. It's, uh, there's a number of things that I've asked about and have not gotten a response, so I'll keep trying to elevate that.
I think you're gonna get, I think they're gonna push back on the slip lane there.
Yeah, sure.
And not be an appropriate place there. And so it kinda gets pushed down the road. Uh, the other thing we haven't spoken about here is enforcement.
Yeah, well, it, it would be nice if there are obvious speed signs and I can tell you, I know exactly where every single one is. And it's just ridiculous that when you're going out of Bollesburg towards State College, there's a 35 mile an hour sign just past the entrance to the Military Museum.
Yeah.
And, and the next sign is almost up to Villa Crest Drive. It's like right around Beaumont. So it, it says 40. So supposedly you're gonna go 35 when you're going and, but coming the other direction, there is a 40 sign um, pretty far back from Warner Boulevard on, on Ath, yeah, that's Atherton Street right there still. And the first 35 sign is past old Bollesburg Road where, and that's where we wanted the speed reduced in the first place. And it's so ridiculous, like, and how about, yeah, can we have a reflective triangle like they do in the 55 signs when, you know, when they reduce speed on the interstate? Big sign, you know, um, that, that catches your attention. People don't drive mindfully. That's half the problem. People coast down Main Street, you know how fast you can get coasting down Main Street if you just take your foot off the gas and coast. Same with Academy Street. And unfortunately, I don't know, what we can't, what can you do about Academy Street? You can't put speed bumps on that road. There's no way you could do that. I drove up the next day after, after that came up and looked at it. It's like, this is ridic, there's not a chance. I don't, I don't know what you can do there.
I just, I also think that sometimes if you do one thing, it makes you mindful of other things. Like when I was, when I was coming from College Avenue going to Weiss. You know, you cut up the road there and you go through and they have the speed bumps and I don't know what the road is above Shamrock.
Oh, great job.
Thank you very much. And they put the speed bumps up there and everything. It made me considerably more mindful. I was, I didn't go fast on that road anyway because it is a residential road like my neighborhood. But it made me, it reminded me and when I made the left-hand turn, I was still going very slowly. And I just think that sometimes you just need one or two things to make people more mindful and remind people on a regular basis. And I like to think that that's really where people are.
In that particular case, they had to double the amount of speed bumps because they weren't effective in the first place. Now they're so, so um.
Obnoxious.
There, there's so many of them, you can't even go over 20 unless you're just on the gas, on the brake, on the gas. But, you know, so it's effective for that and I, I understand why they're doing it there, but it's just not appropriate. Like, couldn't, couldn't do that on Main Street. Um, it would be absurd.
Bring back cobblestone.
Yeah.
So when you go down.
Or brick.
Little, 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 little.
Brick.
Can we just put rubble strips here and there?
I don't know.
I don't know. Think, just gotta keep looking for.
All right, are we moving on?
Looking for answers. Okay, yeah. So we beating that one.
Move to approve voucher transmit sheet, transmital sheet 2024, that's four for an amount of $141,760 and 61 cents.
Second.
Okay, uh, questions on vouchers? There are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, on to committee reports. Executive Committee, um, a very long dissent agenda, which all will end up being on the general forum um, coming up. So uh, well, yeah, last month and it was in the general forum. So we don't have an executive, so that's all over with. Human Resources, we met um, May 1st. The only couple of things we talked about were, we approved a job description for a fire and life safety inspector dash firefighter that the code department wants to utilize. So um, kind of interesting how that's gonna work um, to have uh, have staff available. They're gonna rotate the shifts and so there will be coverage. Basically somebody that's available on call for alphas, but also um, available for code alleged violations in, in town or anywhere basically, occupancy, noise, whatever. Um, so I, I like that idea. The other thing we did was uh, um, we made a motion to uh, move on to the general forum. A revised uh, pay um, COLA plan to use the um, CPIU for one particular month rather than the average of all of them for a period of time. Anyway, that's coming up to the general forum too. And uh, let's see, yeah, the only other thing on executive committee now, that's, we had the solar power purchase update at the general forum. So um, Climate Action Sustainability Day, we did not meet. So we have three for Dennis and I don't suppose anybody intended in his place and wants to say anything. So we'll move on to Parks Capital and et cetera from Bruce.
Yeah, um, Parks Capital has not met. They are planning on meeting. What's news? Um, Parks Governance Committee, uh, it's, we're at the stage of um, the Park Authority, um, or the revisions need to be there, done to their bylaws. And I'm sure that we can find some things to clarify. In particular, we're talking about the need for the Parks Authority to report regularly to the various municipalities and maybe even on the agenda quarterly for a full update. Um, the other thing in terms of Parks Governance is there seems to be fairly strong support for taking the Parks Capital Committee and transition it into a Parks Advisory Committee. There's some townships that feel because of their fiduciary responsibilities with funding the park system, that they'd like to have a more direct, they'd like to have maybe a quarterly meeting with the authority to hear what's going on, be able to ask questions. Now, they already have that privilege, but there's, that's, you know, the details will be in what kind of teeth do they have? Are they merely advisor? Are they merely assisting? Or I don't wanna say merely, but are they assisting in the communications between Park Agency, the Park Authority and the municipalities? So that seems to. So that seems to be the way that's headed. Park Authority is basically receiving updates on getting ready for the spring season, the, the sports seasons, the activities, there's a lot of activities that are ongoing. Some are big, some are small. At some point, I, I, again, I've asked and I'll, I'll continue to ask for a, a almost activity by activity report on cost recovery. In other words, certainly the, the activities, our programs and stuff that we do are not intended to be a for-profit enterprise, but we ought to be transparent about what proportion of the cost of running these activities are being picked up by the participants and/or advertisers or other outside support and then what proportion are being addressed by the municipal subsidies. So that's what I have.
Okay, thanks Bruce. Frank, for all yours, finance.
Okay, I'll start with finance. Finance, I'm beginning to, to worry. It's, it's becoming apparent to me that the process for coming up with the budget, every time somebody's brought something up that we ought to look at, it's, well, we've done it this way for a thousand years. You know, it's, it's, the group that's there that has been there the last couple of years, they want to keep doing it the same way, the old definition of insanity. Keep doing it the same way and expect different results. I can honestly tell you that Half Moon, Ferguson, and probably us are the three that are sitting there going, wait a minute, we can't keep, we can't afford it, we can't keep affording it. So there's, there's a lot going on. One of the things you said about the COLA thing that's going to the general forum, and that, that's not the, what, what, how we determine COLA is not the issue. I heard, I don't know how many times, I finally kind of, didn't go off, but I, they were saying, oh, well, COLA's in the policy, you got to give them COLA, you got to give them COLA. Well, I read the policy and the first phrase in the policy says, "If funds are available, then you get COLA and merit increase." That's what they don't understand and that's what we keep telling them. What if those, what if we say, we're only going to give you this much? Right now, with the five percent COLA they're, they're talking about and the one and a half percent, we're at six percent increase. This is before any of the parking rec, any of the other stuff that goes on. So at some point, we're going to have to say, no, we're going to have to say, you know, okay, five's what you want, we're going to give you one, or we're going to give you two or whatever, or freeze it for a year. But the bottom line is, I'm hearing too much of that in the Finance Committee and trust me, I've, I've, I've been saying all along, I keep saying, guys, we got, we got it, and I'm hearing it from Larry, from Patton, the Financial Director, I'm hearing it from Ferguson and, and, and a couple of the other ones. So I'm not sure, I know last year we were within basically one vote of voting down that budget and I think this year, we may, it may happen. And, and if we can't, if I can't get the Finance Committee to, to move forward and say, look, guys, we got to start over, it's time we say, and I'm hearing more and more of them say, it's got to be revenue based. Here's how, we're going to give you five percent more or three percent more or whatever it is, and that's it. And then we pay these managers and these directors a lot of money, they need to work on fixing it. And that's their job, is to bring their budget in. So like I said, I'm, I'm hearing a lot more turmoil and, and there's a lot of new faces on the Finance Committee and there's a lot of fighting, not really fighting, there's a lot of input that's pushing, no, no, we can't keep doing it that way, we can't keep just increasing the money. So like I said, it was quite a robust discussion on, on, on what we were talking about. It's going to be interesting, I'm waiting to hear back on all the comments from the CIPs. I guess they, they got some pretty, we were pretty calm tonight from what I'm hearing from the other townships. Some of the other townships were, went off pretty big on the CIP, so we'll see how that goes. Hopefully we'll see those at the next Finance Committee, but like I said.
I was kind.
What's that?
I was kind.
We were all kind. But, but like I said, that's, that's where the fight's starting and, and I will tell all of you, when, the one thing they told us at the Finance Committee, when we said about the eleven percent or whatever we got last year, here was their answer. They said, "We had it at eight percent, but the elected officials added four percent." That was what we got told by committees or whatever. And, and, and when you're in a committee and they want to do a study or something, make sure that we're going to, we're going to, it's going to earn money and not cost money. We got to, we got to put a moratorium on studies, but.
God, they love to do studies.
Oh, God. And then once they get them, they have to spend them. You know, the study said, we got to, that's just AV, the AV is still going back to that twenty twenty study they did and they keep, oh, we got to do that, that's what the study said. No, we're fine, we got plenty of AV in that place. But anyway, so like I said, that's, that's getting rougher and harder as I go on, so. Uh, let's see, Connector, we will be having a town get together, there will be a public hearings coming up here, hopefully in the next month or two. You should be listening for them in the paper, they'll probably have one for us, you know, ahead of time. But, but there will be, the, the one coming up for where they're at with NEPA, so that'll be coming here this, next month or so. MPO, really good meeting, MPO's pretty much moving pretty good. We did a lot of tip adjustments and I, I've tried to explain that before, it's, it's just the way we move money around to get all the projects done. The new tip is out in public hearings right now and I'm thinking it's probably going to be over here in another week or so, if it's not over right this week, but the public comment on it, on the next tip's out and we'll just wait to hear from that, next MPO meeting will approve the tip for, and I think it's twenty-five, twenty-nine, I think is the next one, something like that. So that's what's going on there. Like I said, there was an opportunity for grants for, for economic development and safety and I think we, we could look at putting something in that would help our quarter along here. So that's something Mark and I'll work on, get something together that we can all look at and approve. So that's all I got.
Okay, thanks Frank. And Tracy, Public Safety.
I got nothing.
Didn't happen.
We're supposed to be tomorrow.
Okay.
Oh, shucks.
And I'm hoping I can be tomorrow because I will be, I can, I have the time, I won't be here, but since my email doesn't work, I'm having a little, I did get the link through my regular email, but something's wrong with my email.
It's IT.
They can fix it, we'll fix it up for you sooner or later.
Well, it's been a while, it's been a while, it's been some time now for me. It's been a week.
Well, here you are.
It just spins and it's everything I have, it's my phone, it's my computer, it's everything, it just spins. Perfect, thank you.
All right. Move to your chair.
Second.
Okay. Done.